Good evening. I called to order the September 4th meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and asked the City Secretary to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Bessie.
Here.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Here.
Mayor Protim Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the City Council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you. And would you please join the City Council in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our Sergeant at Arms tonight is Lieutenant John Morris. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight. Tonight's agenda of the City Council is comprised of the following items. We have four zoning petitions, have an item related to the process for filling a vacancy on the City Council, and there are two items related to recommendations for appointments to boards and commissions. The zoning petitions are listed as public hearings, and when these items are called, persons in the council chamber will be able to speak on this matter. If there is opposition to the zoning petitions, the proponents and opponents will each be given 15 minutes for presentation and three minutes for a vote. If no one wishes to speak, the public hearings will be closed and the City Council will consider the item. We are televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Copies of the agenda and videos of the meeting are always available online at www.cityofws.org and just click on the "Watch Meetings Online" option. May we have item number one, please?
Item Z1, Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of New Story Church from RM 12S and RS 9 to LOL. Property located on the southwest corner of Waltham Street and Nissen Avenue, located in the southeast ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? I know the petitioner is here if there are any questions. Seeing no opposition, I would declare the public hearing closed, and I recognize Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. If it's an order, Mr. Murphy, if you give the report to the planning board, please.
As was mentioned, the petitioner is the New Story Church. The request is to rezone from RM 12S and RS 9 to LOL for the use as church or religious institution, neighborhood, offices, group care facility A, and residential building, single family. This is the subject property shown on the overall county and city growth management map. Subject property highlighted in yellow, it's currently a index of RM 12S and RS 9 zoning. This is the subject property highlighted in yellow on the aerial photo. And this is the subject property indicated on the Southeast Winston-Salem Area Plan Update, and it's shown in blue, institutional use. This is an image of property. This is looking along Waltham, I believe. This is looking west on Waltham Street. This is looking across Waltham from the subject property. And this is looking down Nissen Avenue. You see the rezoning sign posted there on the subject property. And this single-family house is part of the subject property. The site was originally developed as a church and has most recently been used as a group care facility. This request will restore uses previously allowed on the site. I'm sorry. The request would place LOL zoning beside existing single-family homes. The request is in accordance with the recommendations of Legacy 2030 and the Southeast Winston-Salem Area Plan Update. At their August 9th, 2018 City-County Planning Board Public Hearing, there was no opposition present, and the Planning Board unanimously recommended approval of the request.
Any questions, Mr. Murphy? Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Just a comment that emotion. New Story Church, formerly Prodigals, has been an excellent partner to the Waltham community. One of the reasons why I wanted to have the report read into the record or discussion to the record, because I do see some folks here from the southeastern portion of the city who might be interested in the rezoning. I have heard no one who has been opposed to this particular rezoning, particularly for the great work that they've been doing. So at this particular time, Mayor.
Yes.
Members of the council, I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W-3377.
Sir, second.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that motion passes unanimously. Item Z2?
Item Z2, Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of the City of Winston-Salem from County MUS and RS 9 to City MUS and RS 9. Property located on the southwest side of Metalark Drive, south of Robin Hood Road, located in the West Ward. Planning Board recommends approval of the petition.
Is there anyone in council chamber who would like to be heard on this particular zoning request? Seeing no one, I would declare the public hearing closed. I recognize Councilmember Clark.
This is more of a technical change. This property is currently being voluntarily annexed into the city, so it has to go from county zoning to city zoning, so the zoning itself doesn't change. It simply goes from County MUS and RS 9 to City MUS RS 9. So with that, I move approval for, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item in W-3378.
Sir, second.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Clark. Item Z3?
Item Z3, Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utility Commission from GI and RS 9 to GIS. Property located on the south side of Ziegler Road between US 52 and the Norfolk Southern Railroad. Planning Board recommends approval of the petition, located in the northeast ward.
I want to recognize Councilmember Burke, I believe, may as well continue.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, I move to continue case W-3379 until October the 1st, 2018.
Sir, second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. My motion passes unanimously. We'll rehear that one on October the 8th.
Excuse me.
First. Very good. Item Z4?
Item Z4, Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of Longco Incorporated from HBS to GBS. Property located on the east side of Stars Ferry Road between Laura Road and Hollowood Court, located in the West Ward. Planning Board recommends approval of the petition.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? I know the petitioners are here if there are any questions. Seeing no opposition, I would declare the public hearing closed. Councilmember Clark, do you want a presentation?
I would like to shorten. This is, I think, somewhat of a unique project, and I think it's maybe an indication of what the future holds, so that the staff can present something.
Murphy? Hopefully, yeah, microphone's on this time. As was stated, this is, the petitioner is Longco Incorporated. This is a request for special use rezoning from HBS to GBS for multiple uses. This is the subject property shown on the overall growth management plan for the city and county. Subject property highlighted in yellow, parcel currently zoned HBS. This is the subject property highlighted in yellow on the aerial photo. This is the subject property indicated on the West Suburban Area Plan Update that council and commissioners just recently adopted. The subject property is shown for high-density, excuse me, intermediate-density residential. This is the subject property. It's the former LA Rentals Showcase Landscape Retail Establishment. This is looking south on Stars Ferry Road. Subject property is to the left. This is looking north on Stars Ferry Road. Subject property is to the right. This is looking across Stars Ferry Road. This is looking further north on Stars Ferry Road, approaching the intersection at Country Club. And this is Fath Road, which is a road that currently stubs into the northern part of the property. This is where Fath Road connects out to the Stars Ferry Country Club Road intersection at an odd angle. And this is looking from that intersection back towards the subject property on Fath Road. This is the rendering that was submitted by the petitioner that shows a mixture of uses. Retail with residential above, and some of the units along the Main Street concept, there are just some standalone multifamily residential buildings, and there are some buildings shown for restaurant and clubhouse use as part of the multifamily and mixed-use retail and office development. This is an image that staff came up with that shows the split retail and residential on that Main Street concept. These are the elevations that were submitted by the petitioner. The site has been commercially zoned and developed for many years. The request proposes a mixture of residential and commercial uses designed within a walkable setting. The proposed residential density of 6.18 units per acre is lower than the maximum of 18 units per acre recommended in the area plan. The site does front along a major thoroughfare, and improvements along Stars Ferry Road will be required. Staff sees the use, even though not completely in compliance with the area plan recommendation for intermediate residential. The mixed-use component of that is a good transitional use between the residential to the south and the more intense commercial and industrial to the north. At their August 9th, 2018 City-County Planning Board Public Hearing, there was no opposition that was present, and the Planning Board unanimously recommended approval of the request and certified that the site plan does meet UDO requirements.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Murphy, Mr. McIntosh?
It's probably in the report, I just missed it, but I saw where staff had requested the Greenway easements, and those were in the, the applicant had agreed to those.
Correct. They are shown on the revised plan.
Great. Thank you. All right. Mr. Clark?
As I said, I think this is a very creative use of a combination of residential and some commercial. It is, actually, it slopes downhill, so the business parks kind of at the bottom of hill, and the apartments will be above it. So it's, you know, it'll be very nice. I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W-3381, and, three, the cycling.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of this motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Councilmember Clark. Item Z5?
Item Z5, Resolution Establishing the Process for Filling the Vacancy on the Winston-Salem City Council. This item was continued from the August 20th, 2018 City Council meeting.
Councilmembers, as you know, we have began discussion on that, and we continue with it tonight. If it's agreeable to council, I'm going to ask the city attorney to just review briefly the three options that are available to the council, and then we'll, if it's, again, if it's agreeable to the council, we would allow members of the public maybe 20 minutes to make comments to us without objection.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Carmen, if you would do.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protim Burke, council members. Basically, there are two options. Either you use the local act, which is a charter amendment, or you use the general statute. In your agenda package, you have an outline of the various options. I'm going to start with option one, which is basically the local act. You should have at your places a document that looks like this. It has Z5 on it. It's a copy of the local act, okay? And it's section one that applies. Under the local act, essentially, the vacancy is filled by taking, since we have more than 12 months left on the term, taken from the Forsyth County Executive Committee of each political party, a designated person or candidate for the office. And since there are five certified parties in Forsyth County, you might potentially have a recommended candidate or a candidate from each of the five parties. So you might have five individual names on the ballot. But anyway, each of the parties would have the option, basically, of nominating one person whose name would be placed on the ballot. And so you would have an election based upon those five names. It's not, you do, will not have a primary. The charter is written, does not provide for a primary. It's just a vote on those names. And then the actual election process has to occur within 60 days after the vacancy occurs. So what does that mean? Could technically have two interpretations. If Councilmember Montgomery were to tender his resignation, for example, tonight, since the tendering of that resignation is not revocable, especially when council accepts the same. If he's accepted, he cannot revoke, he cannot rescind it, basically, so it's irrevocable. So you could argue that at the point the council has accepted that resignation, the vacancy has occurred because it cannot be rescinded. Or you could take the opposite position, which is that once he actually physically leaves office, the vacancy occurs at that point in time. Either reading is possible. Which one has, is preferable, is up to council. The only thing I would say, that if you take the reading that the vacancy occurs at the point the resignation has been offered and accepted by council, you can start the process of having the election during that 60-day period. He would be able, the Councilmember Montgomery would be able to sit and vote on, not, sorry. Councilmember Montgomery during that election process would still remain as a council member, and whoever is successful in that election process, basically, would be appointed after he leaves office. Is that clear?
Could Councilmember Montgomery give a resignation to be effective at a date in the future?
Yes, he could. So that's, that's the special election process, basically. Again, each party would recommend a candidate, potentially up to five candidates, one from each of the certified parties. Those names will be on the ballot. You have an election within 60 days. 60 days could be counted from the point that he's tendered his resignation, or it could be counted from the point that he's actually left office. If you look at the point that he's left office and start the clock 60 days from that point forward, then arguably, you have a gap in representation for the East Ward. So I guess that's, that's one thing perhaps to point out. If you start the clock at the point that he tenders his resignation, then you won't have a, arguably, you won't have a gap in representation. But if you start the clock after he leaves office, then you arguably have a gap in representation. Does that make sense? So that's the special election process. Again, there's no, no primary. It's just that election. And you have potentially up to five candidates, okay? So that's option one. And option two is to receive a recommendation from the Executive Committee of the Democratic Party. And it's the Democratic Party, basically, because the outgoing council member is a Democrat. And option two, and option three, which I'm going to discuss, are basically based upon the statute, which says council can appoint the person to fill the vacancy. Historically, when a vacancy has occurred and council has used the appointment process, council has received a recommendation from the party of the outgoing council member. So if it's a Democrat, then it's a recommendation from the Executive Committee of the Democratic Party. Then that recommendation is forwarded to council, and council votes on that recommendation. Now, there's nothing in the statute that speaks to receiving a recommendation from the Executive Committee of the party of the outgoing council member, but that's just something that the previous councils have followed, have followed four out of the six times. So, again, you could opt to do that if you want to. It's up to the council. And if you do receive a recommendation, it's still up to council in terms of whether or not council wants to follow that recommendation. So that's option two. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Bessie?
With regard to the special election alternative, you mentioned that there are now five parties that could potentially name candidates. The statute as written reads that the candidate receiving a majority of the votes cast shall assume office forthwith. I don't see any provision for plurality election. Is, would the results be in limbo and potentially contested if no candidate received an absolute majority?
That is a potential outcome, but again, I would have to defer to the elections board in terms of what, how they would resolve that. Because, like you said, the local act doesn't address that.
If I were the, if I were the attorney for candidate number two, I would sue if necessary.
I understand.
Anyway.
Mr. Clark, you have a question on the?
I'm having a hard time coming up with the fifth party. You've got Democrats, Republicans, Green, and Libertarian.
Constitution.
Constitution. Oh, excuse me, Mr. You're.
It's okay.
Yes, I'm sorry. Don't mention it.
Yeah, I previously stated two, because those were the two that I was familiar with, but I had a subsequent conversation with the local board of elections and found out there are five certified parties.
I stand corrected. Thank you.
But anyway. So those are, so that's option one, and option two. Option three. And option three is basically in your agenda book. It's, again, an option that could be allowed or is allowed for under the statute, because, again, the statute says the council makes the appointment. Council could choose to just simply receive a recommendation from the Democratic Party, or council could choose to do a more elaborate nomination and ballot process. And so what you have in your agenda package is a nomination and ballot process. And basically, quickly, the nomination and ballot process provides for the submission of applications by a deadline. You would advertise the vacancy. Again, at this point, the vacancy occurs when the council member tenders his resignation, because it's not, cannot be rescinded. It's irrevocable. So that process would basically start when the council member has tendered his resignation. But then you would advertise for the vacancy, and the policy, or at least the resolution calls for advertising for 14 calendar days. And the receipt of the applications would, of course, be reviewed by council. The application package would include a letter of interest, a resume, contact information, and a written opinion on the top three challenges facing Winston-Salem, and a separate written opinion on the top three challenges facing the East Ward. There is a word limitation, not to exceed 500 words. Applications can be received via mail, email, and hand delivery. And for the mail applications, of course, they would have to be postmarked by 5:00 p.m. of the due date. Again, in terms of the, I guess, the applicants submitting an application, they'd have to be eligible to vote, and must reside in the East Ward, and must be a member of the Democratic Party, okay? Again, council and, including the mayor, would review the applications. And then council would have a special meeting. At that meeting, individual council members from the applicant pool would nominate a replacement for, in this case, Councilmember Montgomery. Each of the nominees, basically, would be placed on the ballot. And then, once placed on the ballot, council members would go through the voting process, basically, until you get to two candidates. And then council would have the opportunity to receive a presentation from those two candidates, and then go through the final voting process. That's basically it in a nutshell. And the person receiving the majority votes would basically be the candidate that would fill the vacancy on council. That's the process in a nutshell. If you want me to describe more, just let me know, Mayor.
Any questions, Ms. Carmen, at this point? All right. I believe, Councilmember Montgomery, you had a comment you'd like.
Yes, as we've been walking through the, the two different methods that exist in having conversation with individuals in the public, it even appears that even though the two legal options that the city has, still, in many individuals in the public's eye, seems insufficient to include many voices in the process. As such, I've had conversation with members in the community and others around a particular process that would get to what I believe is a more suitable way in which the entire public and who lives in the East Ward would be able to have a say-so. As such, it would be two parts to the recommendation that I would have. One would be that the council would act to set in place that the council would receive a recommendation from the Democratic, from the Forsyth County Democratic Party Executive Committee members who make up the East Ward, as well as, and while in the same process, the City Council would seek legislation from the North Carolina General Assembly that would amend the city's charter to provide for a special election process with a primary and general election to fill any vacancy on the City Council. The reason why that's important is that currently, any special election process would mean that the party would elect one person named to go on the ballot without anyone who resides in the ward's ability to run for the seat. If the, if we request this permission, we would be granted the opportunity for open primary for anyone who wants to run for the seat with a primary and with a general, a general election, as well as the authority within the charter to be effective with any appointment that the council will make to receive, to temporarily fill a vacancy. Once the requested legislation is enacted, the recent vacancy filled through the appointment process would be subject to one or more of the amended charter provisions. I would ask that any person appointed acknowledge that the appointment might be temporary and make a commitment to refrain from running in any subsequent election process undertaken pursuant to one of the aforementioned charter amendments. That person may certainly run in, in any future general election. Since there is a possibility of additional vacancies on the council in the near future, it would be also a question of asking the council to be able to have something in place in the future that would allow the council to use this same process, if it so desires, to fill vacancies through a real special election process with both a primary and a general election in the future, provided the North Carolina General Assembly amends the city charter as requested by the council. I've had conversation with both Republican and Democratic members of our delegation, and they have stated that this is something that they would support to amend the charter, to allow the city to have this special provision, to allow for special election, because it is the most democratic process to allow for a full-fledged special election. The question has just become around the timing associated, when such legislation could go through. That's something that I offer on the table as consideration.
Questions for Councilmember Montgomery. Councilmember Clark?
Ideally, I would like for the residents of East Ward to have an election and to vote. But we don't have that option right now. The best we can do is ask the Democratic Party to get the East Ward folks involved in giving us a recommendation. I do, I guess, in principle, like what Mr. Montgomery is proposing, but I do think we need to think it out a little bit. I think there's a difference between, and I can only go back to when this seat was vacant, was the last time we did this. There was only six months left in the term, and I think there's a difference between if there's six months left, or two, in this case, it's two and almost two and a half years. So I think we need to think through that. The other thing is, realistically, the folks in Raleigh are not going to get together between now and November. They're all out running for office. So I think we have time to think through what we want to establish as a long-term policy. I think, I see two things here. One, we need to make a decision on how to fill this, because Mr. Montgomery's going to be leaving for too long. And there, I think the best thing, we, we'll talk about that in a minute. The other one is what we should do long-term going forward, and I think those are two different things. And I think the second one, we, I like the idea of a special election, but I do think we have time to, to send that, I guess, to general government, for lack of a better committee, and let them flush it out with our attorney and come back with very specific language. I just don't think Raleigh's going to have a special session for Winston-Salem's. As a matter of fact, they might, you hear nice things, they'll do it, but they may not do anything until the long session starts in February next year. They may not get around to March, April. Who knows what happens in Raleigh? But I think there's two different decisions, and we need to be sure, I think we need to separate those and go forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Montgomery, you wanted to comment to that?
And as Justin, and I agree, Councilmember Clark, you can't guesstimate what the General Assembly will do, Assembly will do, but from the existing members who are there, particularly, and Senator Lo said it was all right to call his name tonight, that he was very supportive of it and actually was very optimistic about the opportunity to move forward such a recommendation in November when the General Assembly goes back in for a special session already scheduled for the end of November. Now, whether or not that happens or not, that's still, that's an if in that process, and both of those are ifs. But because there is such a long timeframe left on the term, regardless of if it was an item taken up by the General Assembly in November or item taken up by the General Assembly in January, end of January, early February, I think it makes sense and is prudent to still seek that to be effective and impact this election because it still will be a significant amount of time, not six months, four months, or two months, left in the term that would allow for the entire community to have a say-so. Because what I've heard from the community is, what happens if the council appoints a person, even if it's recommended from the party, and the community doesn't like them? So, what do we do? And there's really nothing, except for if the citizens have a full ability to have an election where everyone in the ward gets to go and vote.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yeah, I just want to state for the record, I agree with Councilmember Montgomery's suggestion. I do feel that the people of the East Ward should make the decision about who represents them. Now, we had the option that was granted to us by the General Assembly for those nine people that you see here on the dais to make the decision. I feel like, you know, we should move forward with the precinct chairs. I think there are about fifteen or so precinct chairs in the Democratic Party to make this decision temporarily. But ultimately, what I heard from everybody who stood up at this podium was that the people should make the decision. I supported that with my vote, and I'm going to support that again when it's time to vote, whether it's tonight or at some later date. I just feel that all the people of the community should make a decision and not just those folks here on this dais or those folks who are in the Democratic Party. It should be a full special election. It's what I consider to be a true special election whereby all people are heard and not just a select few.
Councilwoman Bethany?
Please mark the history. All of us speaking are in agreement, I think, in the seating on the ideal process. I'll go further to say that I'll commit tonight that if I win the House seat for which I'm running, I'll support the council's request on this matter if it comes into the long session. Certainly, I want first to hear the public comments that we've arranged, but I anticipate that we'll be in a position to vote, to move forward in this suggested way after the public comments.
Councilwoman Larson?
Well, it's great to get two legislators already committed to a change. I think there's no question that this system that we currently have is inadequate and it's the flaws of real, true democracy being able to be executed in this city are showing up in this process. I applaud Councilmember Montgomery's effort to clean up and get into legislation, a process that is, in fact, democratic and gets the people voting for their representatives. I do think, along with Councilmember Clark, that we do have some questions of refinement as to what that new ordinance might actually look like. And I'm thinking particularly of time periods involved. If you're six months out from an election, do you want a special election when you're going to have to stand for election again within a matter of six months? So, clearly, there's some refinement of what that is going to actually be, and if we're willing to send it back, maybe to committee or to the attorney, and refine what is really functional, because we may have some layered nuances in how we handle it based on how far out we actually are in the process. But I think that that's valid. I think for the citizens of the East Ward, I don't want to make a decision for your representation. I want a democratic process for the city as a whole and as a council member. That's what I'm supporting. I do think that we are going to have a period of time that is going to be awkward in the sense that we've got to either let his seat go dark or we've got to have somebody in that seat for a while that maybe will not be there permanently or what have you. And that needs to be refined a little bit, too, while we're in this discussion. But I do think the ultimate solution that can come out of this process, as painful as it's been, is that we can have a much stronger system of fulfilling these vacancies when they occur, and we could very likely have several of them in the next year or so. So, I would applaud this and I would support the idea. I do wonder if we need to refine the actual document a little bit before we consummate it tonight.
Right. Councilwoman Burke?
Yeah, I agree with what I've heard said, and I do thank Mr. Montgomery for moving forward, but I definitely know that people need to represent themselves. We cannot represent the East Ward. They need to have that opportunity.
Very good. All right. Basically, what I understand is it's a bifurcated recommendation that Councilwoman Montgomery is one that we would, we as a council would ask the Forsyth County Democratic Party Executive Committee, which would be made up of representatives of the East Ward, would then submit a name to the city council for consideration that would serve until the next election or special election, whichever comes first, basically. And then, secondly, we'd take to the General Government Committee a proposal to create a new process by which this city council could call for a special election along the lines we've talked about, with all the details that have to be worked out at the committee level. But that's its whole of that, and so, just wanted to make sure the public was hearing that. I want to open that up right now for twenty minutes for discussion. And by the way, I did put at your place a proposal that I received from Mr. Carter and some other members of the East Ward. It's here, and I'm sure he'll want to speak to that as well. So, anyone would like to be heard on this? Mr. Carter?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, distinguished council members. Philip Carter, 955 Mahzarn Place. Again, I'd like to start by thanking you, Mr. Clark. I almost called you Mr. McCain, but thank you.
I'll take that.
I appreciate anybody that stands up for democracies, James Hess and Mr. Larson and you, Madam Pro Temp, and I think all of you have decided that that's the best route. But we do know that we have precedents that is set in the statutes, which is not in the ordinance or in 160A, Section 63, which could easily be implemented, and two, our ordinance, and that is whereby the Democratic Party selects through the organized precincts, which becomes the executive committee, the person to replace Mr. Montgomery. We've done it with Fleming L. Main. We've done it with even Senator Paul Lo. And I think there's one other person that just eludes me right now. I think that's the process in which we should take. I stand here today with many vice chairs and precinct chairs in not only the East Ward, but other wards within this city. I have taken the time to go throughout our city and get petitions or signatures from many people, not just in the East Ward, in the West, the Southwest, the South, the Northwest, the North, and Southeast, that believe that the people and themselves should have a right to elect who represent them. Now, with that, I'm going to say this. You posed the question that suppose the person is selected, the people don't like him, what do we do? I'm going to pose one. Suppose you all was to use the process in which you rescinded, the people don't like him. What would we do then? I believe we can live with it when the people have chosen whomever it is, whether it be Mr. Ed, Flipper, or anyone. But if the people choose him, they have no choice but to live with whom they elected, as we have done with each and every one of you. Whether we like your decisions or not, we live with you. And that would be the same thing that the individuals of the East Ward would have to do if we use the processes which have been afforded to us through the Democratic Party, again, as it related to electing our county commissioner, Fleming L. Main, Senator Paul Lo, and one more person, and I hope it's one more, but they can forgive me if I cannot remember their names. So, I would like you to take that Democratic Party's process, and let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Anyone else like to be heard? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Yusuf Suggsell, Executive Director, action for now. I'd just like to bring it to your attention that, again, there was an oath taken. And being that that oath was taken, it was taken to stand under the Constitution of North Carolina. So, what I'm asking of you all, in your mindfulness of what you're going to do and how you want to try to set this special election, that you be mindful of the North Carolina Constitution. Because a lot of times, we're going by ordinances and we're going by statute, but we need to make sure that that statute that we're referencing is in pursuant to the Constitution, which your oath is connected to. Now, I agree, in my opinion, even as Mr. Taylor has stated, there should be a special election. Special means special. This is a special time. We're in a special time in history. The people deserves for it to be special. Let them feel special. This is what they stand by. Ordinances, statute, they fit under the Constitution. This is what your oath is bound by. And being that you want to, if you want to quote a statute, then you have Chapter 4.1 where it says, "In the state of North Carolina, the common law is in full effect." So, let's be mindful of these things. You know, and the moral and the goodness, and as I close in reading, Article 1, Section 2, sovereignty of the people. All political power is vested in and derived from the people. All government of right originates from the people, is founded upon their will only, and is instituted solely for the good of a whole. So, please be mindful as we make these decisions. Let the people feel special. Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I didn't come prepared to say anything today, but just to watch.
How was your name and address?
Oh, Dee Washington, 841 Rich Avenue. And what I've seen here tonight, I am deeply, you've restored my faith in all of you, and I want to say thank you for that. You all know me from different spaces, and I am an advocate for democracy. I believe in access and opportunity for the people. That is what I support, no matter what, unequivocally, without question. So, therefore, any process that supports access and opportunity for the voters to speak, because we've known a time period where people were not allowed to, I am in support of. And I do support, you know, now it's, now the job is to make sure the Democratic Party, right, does that caucusing that I've heard that they were committing to, et cetera, right? That we do this as an open process. But what I want to say is thank you to the council for listening. This is how the process works, that the people speak, the council listens, and we work together to ensure democracy. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Marva Reed, 1434 North Cameron Avenue, 27105. We came tonight to accept the process that you have used when choosing a chief of police, which runs the entire community. But I, I'm okay with it if the people of the East Ward want to vote. My main concern is downtime with leadership in the East Ward and the possible chaos since we're right on the verge of a November election. It would be much smoother if we did it the way you've been doing it before. But I feel like the candidates would be okay, and the best candidate will win. We ask that you be strong and stand for what you actually believe and do not fall prey to fear mongers. I've seen this body do that before. We must not take our Democratic Party into upheaval. We must concentrate on our November elections. I've seen so much in the past month of these group tainting young minds. It just bothers me when Councilmember Montgomery has done such an outstanding job of bringing in millennials into the East Ward that want to set up businesses, that have set up their businesses. And we, and we would like to have someone that can work cohesively with a new House of Representatives. And we just feel like that this is going to be an issue. But I understand that come November, if I'm correct, we can change this. I'm hoping that this is the way you are explaining it, because there are some very competent millennials that can keep the East Ward going into the right direction. So, we will approve, however Councilmember Montgomery wishes. We're representing the East Ward Safe Coalition, the East Northeast Winston Neighborhood Association, and the 14th Street Illumina and Ashley Precinct 301.
Thank you, Shreem. Gentlemen in the back, wanting to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ken Rashid. I live at 1338 Argon Boulevard here in Winston. I can honestly say that I am encouraged by what I've heard tonight from everybody. I, too, was in the neighborhood getting signatures, and it was refreshing to talk to some of the people. Some of the people not aware of what's going on, and some people were very reluctant to even sign their name to a form, and I can understand that. But there are people that, the majority of the people that I did talk to are in favor of the community electing the replacement for Mr. Montgomery. There were even people in the community that wanted to, wanted some of the sheets that we had so they can get signatures because they knew people that were very interested in the filling of his position. So, I appreciate the opportunity to come and say that, again, I am encouraged by what I heard tonight, and I hope it happens that the people will be able to select this replacement.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Joanne Allen, excuse me, on a little horse tonight, P.O. Box 28427102. "We the People," that's how the Constitution starts, "we the people." When we the people elect officials, we do it for the sole purpose of speaking on behalf of all the people. And sure enough, a special election for East Winston is great. We're all for it because it gives the, all the individuals, whether they want to vote or not, the opportunity to get up, get out, and say, yes, I want to cast my vote, especially for East Winston, which is one of the poorest communities in the country. Okay? So, when I hear individuals saying that we need to, you know, let's keep on the same path, apparently, sometimes the same path isn't always the correct path. So, I'm all for a special election to let all the people, instead of any appointees or anything like that, because you haven't really made up your mind yet. So, I'm all for special elections, and we don't know until we ask whether or not the North Carolina General Assembly will allow a special election. If they could do it in 1971, they can do it in 2018. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening, Phyllis Russell, seventeen fifty-two, Stonewood Drive, Winston Salem, what's my phone code? Two seven one zero, I think one zero three. Oh, Dan Bessie, that's where I live. I have a question, because I'm a little confused. Depending on the outcome of the election in November, are you waiting until the election is finished and then you're going to do a special election and find out, and then have a special election and then run off everybody? Or then, or are you having a special election for Montgomery and then do the other two seats? Are you just waiting for?
Tonight, we're only dealing with Mr. Montgomery's.
Right, but I'm saying potentially, we could have three people you got to fill, but you know you have one. So are you going then, when it's all said and done, we got to come back and say, all right, find some more money for two more elections, or we going to figure out what?
I think, I think the council, if we had two vacancies, additional vacancies, I think it makes sense to have a single election at, at one time.
Okay, that's my one. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. I'll close with a public comment. And Councilmember Montgomery, I would certainly entertain a motion from you. I think it'll be a two-part motion if you're ready.
Yep. I move that the council use the statutory appointment process for filling the upcoming vacancy on the city council. In particular, receive a recommendation from the Democratic Party County Executive Committee, who makes up the East Ward. And that the city council seek legislation from the North Carolina General Assembly that amends the city charter to provide for a special election process with the primary and general election to fill the vacancy on the city council that is twelve months or longer. That latter part, I request be sent to committee for further vetting to clarify exactly what language will be included in such a request. And I would also ask that the recommendation that comes from the party come with the caveat that the person who is appointed may only serve until a special election is called and requested that person not run in a special election.
I second that motion.
If I could just clarify, a person would serve until a special election or the regular election, assuming that you couldn't get the other legislation.
Correct.
Councilman Clark? Sir, I've got, I've got a second. Councilman Clark?
I'm looking at the attorney. I liked it till you got to the last sentence. Do we really have the authority, one, to tell the Democratic Executive Committee who and who cannot vote, and two, to say that this person can't serve but so long? Are we going to kick him off or what? I think Ms. Allen had a very good point. I'm not even going to try to predict what Raleigh's going to do. I will say with certainty, I think there's going to be a big catfight down there next year, just based on everything that's going. I think the best thing we can do, and I wish we could have a special election, but we don't have that option, the best thing we can do is ask the Democratic Executive Committee to give us a name. And I would trust them, by the way, I don't even know who's head of the Forsyth County Democratic Party. But anyway, I, we're going to have to trust them for you people out there to show up and, and to hold them accountable, be sure that's done properly. But I don't know if we can legally put caveats that the person's got to quit or resign, or we're going to kick him off. You know, I sit in a very tenuous place. If, if majority rules, I'd be kicked off this thing a long time ago, because it's only one of me up here.
We let you serve.
I think the best we can do is get, as best we can get the involvement, take this back to committee, come up with a recommendation for Raleigh, and hope they, they do something with it. But I, I'm not, and I would love to have a special election, but I think the best we can do is fill it and, and ask Raleigh to, to help us out.
That is basically the motion, that we fill the position, asking a recommendation from the, from executive committee. I don't think legally a person can, can excuse themselves from running in the future, but I think what Councilmember Montgomery's saying, he would ask that they, would state that they don't have an intention to do that. Councilman Montgomery?
And, and as a point of reflection, this has been utilized in other cities. In Charlotte, they had similar instances where individual councilmembers were replaced and that person committed not to run in the future so that it could allow for a clearly democratic process, because anybody who is appointed has an upper hand on anyone else who's in the community who decides to run. And so the caveat of saying, asking that person not to run, and they could, it's not binding, it's just a personal statement that the person makes. And that's what I was saying, and that would be something asked of, within the party. We can't bind that, we can't require it, we can't say that you can't, but it's a personal commitment from a person, right?
Yeah, request. And we leave it up to the party to, to figure out the process. Councilmember Burks?
Just like when a person applies for a position, there's a person who fills that position as interim, and that person is not expected to apply for the job. But I can give you an example, was that Chief Swett? He was going to be the interim, but then he decided he was applied and he got the job.
Right. Councilwoman Taylor?
Yeah, I just want to say to Mr. Clark's comment, words have power. I know you were just sort of joking, but I would just reject the notion that this, this board would do anything politically to kick you off. And in fact, to show that, we made you a, a chair of finance.
Thank you. I will sleep easy tonight.
Please do.
We do, we do have the most, uh, Councilman, excuse me, City Attorney?
Two things. First of all, the local act, the charter, does allow for a special elections. It's just not a full-blown special election with a primary and general election. I just want you to sit there.
Right. We're making a differentiation that we are seeking additional legislation that would give us the ability to have a full election with primary and, and so.
I just wanted to make that clear. And then the other thing, I assume this motion that Councilmember Montgomery has just made is a substitute for the last motion that was voted on.
That, that's my understanding. All right. Does everyone understand the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Okay, that motion does pass unanimously. Thank you, Councilman Montgomery, for coming up with the suggestion and the idea there. And we'll make sure we get that information out clearly to the community of what, what the action was tonight.
And Mayor?
Yes, Councilman?
For the people there, they make sure they get as many people connected with their precincts, and they go down to the Democratic Party and make sure they voice their concerns, because you are the ones who are in this ward, and it's your responsibility to make everybody aware that you are the ones and no one can substitute for you.
Thank you. All right, item Z six?
Item Z six. Mayor joins recommendation for appointment to the Triad Municipal ABC Board. Suzie Fielders, term expiring June twenty twenty-one.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Second. Motion, second. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Item Z seven?
Item Z seven. Mayor joins recommendation for appointment to the Tourism Development Authority. Ronald Mater, term expiring November twenty nineteen.
Is there a motion?
Move.
Second. Motion, second. Discussion? Not all those in favor, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Any comments by councilmembers before we adjourn? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Motion, second, to adjourn. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no.